I'll call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the commissioners reviewed the agenda?
Yes.
Yep.
Item D on the consent agenda is a proclamation. Do you...
You want to read it?
Go first.
So pull it off the consent agenda.
Yeah. I was thinking of reading it.
Sure. That sounds good.
Okay. Item D will be moved for items for commission action. Any other modifications or additions?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
Second.
Second.
Third.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. City license, we have two. Citizen concerns and petitions. Robert Montgomery, would you like to address the commission, please?
Good evening, everybody. I don't know what the proper protocol is for applying law to the 90. Just to make a copy of my concern to give to each one of the commissioners. Is that all right?
Jen, Jen, that's the...
I'm gonna try to, once I do this as best I can, I'm gonna apply the Baptist scripture. We can't get through anything in three minutes, so I'm gonna try to see if I can condense this situation. I can't even see the Lord's Prayer in three minutes. For those of us, is it all right to stand here?
Do we actually need you on the microphone?
We, I think you. I'm a retiree of West Star Energy here in Independence. Also, I've been the pastor of the Maple Street Missionary Baptist Church here in our community for over thirty years. I'm sure those of us who are familiar with the Hundred Year Flood, okay, the flooding damage, et cetera, et cetera, which was experienced all over our city and community and surrounding communities. At the Maple Street Missionary Baptist Church at 812 West Maple, we experienced sewer damage coming from our alley sewer behind the church, okay? Water would come in and go out. Water would come in and go out. So I took the liberty at, when that was a break, I got in contact with the city manager at that time, which was Paul Sass, and had him to come out and voice my concern. He looked at it, he came to the door of the basement. He wouldn't go downstairs because he said he'd been in stuff all day long, so he wasn't going to go off into any more. So he said, if you would, when the time come, if you get some of our city guys, I'd help them unload your damage. You can submit a claim, of which that claim is a part of the material that I gave to you this afternoon, this evening, and we'll see what we can do. So I followed through. I got some of the city guys, when the time would allow, we, you know, haul off our damaged material. Mr. Sass submitted our claim to whom the responsible parties. After a short while, he let me know that our claim, they would not, the city would not take any, or whoever responsible parties would not take responsibility for our loss. Okay. Approximately two years passed, and I noticed that there was some serious excavation and digging in our alley, not only the alley behind the church, but all along about a two or three block area. Extensive sewer replacement, I believe. So at that particular time, Mr. Sass had retired. I in turn got a hold to Mr. Mickey Webb. I briefly explained to him the situation. He said, well, I'd like to come out and see the area, see the church, see what I can do. We met out to the church, looked around. He said, okay, I'll see, I think investigate what may have went on with the replacement and whatever, repair it. Once I got back with him, he informed me that my case had been closed. Okay. Another part of 2015, I was in conversation about city operations, and I was informed, and if I was misinformed, I'll humbly apologize this afternoon, that sewer monies, some sewer... sometime sewer monies is taken and put into the general fund. I said, okay. So I'm here this evening, once again, this is my third trip, through seeking, and I've got all the diagnosed claims, and at that particular time, we're a small congregation. How much time did I have?
You just passed.
And that's basically the gist of my concern. I'm seeking financial recovery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you.
Okay. Adoption of the consent agenda?
So moved, with the exception of item D.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Public hearing, next. Public hearing to consider annexation or de-annexation of a 38.5 acre tract located at 730 Peter Pan Road. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing.
This is a, this is a tract that IEP owns, Independence Action Partnership. They have reason to want to lease that for drilling. Our ordinances prohibit that in the city limits, and they are requesting de-annexation. They are on the outer fringe of our city limits, and they would like to be de-annexed.
So they're drilling for...
They want to let a lease. They want to lease it for drilling purposes.
Oil?
Yes.
Oil and gas.
Do we know how the property tax is what it is?
The property is unimproved. It's just pasture land right now.
I'll give you a little history. That was the purchase by IEP from Paul Newmaster some time ago, and it was not inside the city at the time. The city annexed it by consent, and it was, the goal was for economic development, industrial recruitment, because it's kind of a butt to some land for that purpose.
Or industrial farm.
Yeah. And then, I think, their latest endeavor was they leased it for however long to Inbridge, and were able to generate some, you know, sales tax to the area with that, and plus they collected some rent from that. Now Inbridge has left, and it's used for hay. I think the last time I saw, there were some big bales of hay there, but that's the history of it.
I'm not familiar with oil and gas regulations to see if there's anything restricting being located close to the property. It's obvious you can't do it within town.
It's kind of like zoning. There are some state, it's regulated by the Kansas Corporation Commission. There are some setback rules on how close they can drill to a fence. A tract that size would only support one well, and the price of a well being what it is now, I mean, I was in some discussions with the people that are on the board, and, you know, I don't know if this company, I can't really say for sure, but I doubt they would drill anytime in the future unless prices change.
What's, if we do vote to de-annex, then it will go into county and be zoned by the county too, won't it? So then it'll have to go. In the information that we received in the packet, it, the statute mentioned about the governing body, or also the Planning and Zoning Commission ruling on it. Has the Planning and Zoning Commission rendered an opinion on this?
No, they haven't.
Is that something that in the past we've...
That's not a requirement. I don't know where you're getting that. A de-annexation petition can initiate either with, at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, or at the city level. And it's, it goes through the entity that it's in at the time, what's in the city now. If this was a de-annexation from the county, it would go to the county, but it's not. It's a de-annexation from the city, so it doesn't go to the county.
Yeah. I, I know it said governing body or the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's, I just wondered, for our information, if the Planning and Zoning had looked at it and gave an opinion, so that we would know what their opinion was before we took action, or just a general information.
I know this is a public hearing. Does that mean we might, we're gonna consider action on this tonight, or is this just the first step of the process?
I think it's up to, to us. We can take action, we can table it for further information.
Is there anybody here from IEP, I don't think, is there?
I don't know that there's any further information to give. I mean, if you had a specific question. I mean, I kind of know the history of it. I talked to them in general terms about leases. I don't know if they've signed a lease. I do know that the statute, if you view it favorably, requires that you make two findings. One is that no private rights will be injured or endangered by the annexation, and the other is that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby. It's just kind of more like statutory language.
I don't see any particular reason to hurry into this decision. I'm not sure I'm comfortable voting on it, because I just don't know that much about it. De-annexation is something new to me, unless you guys have a strong opinion on one side of the question.
I don't know if they're gonna use it to raise money, and that, basically. Is that...
IEP has a history of cooperating with the city on a number of projects. They did with the mall roof and some J.C. Penney building. They've worked hand in hand with the city, and generally, both entities are cooperating with each other.
So they partner with the city on many projects? Is that, aren't they the ones that partnered with them on the incubator buildings, that type of thing?
Yes.
Well, not that we need to hurry either.
No.
I'm not, I'm not against it, if it's, if it gives us an opportunity to partner.
Yeah. I can't see anybody wanting to drill anytime real soon, but I've heard of stranger things.
Do you want to enter a motion to table it?
Sure.
Before you do, would you like the organization to bring somebody to the next meeting to fully explain what they're doing?
I'd love to talk to them, either in the meeting or outside of the meeting, one or the other.
I guess I need to, since we, Mickey's representing the owner, following protocol for a public hearing, I don't know if there's any public that is affected by this area that would want to address the commission. If not, I'll close the hearing, now we can continue discussion and entertain a motion.
Sure. I move that we table this for action at a later meeting.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jen, would you?
I have a motion and a second to table this item for action at a later meeting.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Items for commission action, item D from the consent agenda. The commission had received, it's Consider a Proclamation declaring January 31st through February 6th, 2016, as National Catholic Schools Week. We have a proclamation, proclamation 2016, National Catholic Schools Week, January 31st through February 6th, 2016. Whereas St. Andrews Catholic School is celebrating over 100 years of Catholic education in Independence, whereas Catholic schools seek to teach Catholic values, promote excellence in education, prepare students to defend their Catholic faith and to live as active disciples of Christ. Whereas St. Andrews Catholic School promotes virtue-based restorative disciplines by dedicating ourselves to living virtue, supporting others in living virtuous, committing to being constructive and turning conflicts into opportunities to grow in virtue. Whereas this year's theme is Catholic Schools, Communities of Faith, Knowledge, and Service, which highlights school's focus on faith, development, academic excellence, and dedication to community service. Whereas Catholic Schools Week is a joint project of the National Catholic Educational Association and the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops. Now therefore, I, Leonard Koflish, Mayor of the City of Independence, do hereby proclaim January 31st through February 6th, 2016, be established as National Catholic Schools Week, and join St. Andrews Catholic Schools in celebrating. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Independence, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 28th, 2016. I think it's quite remarkable to see over 100 years of education in the community, the devoted support of the parish, and their work to, to provide a quality-based education source, in addition to our public schools for Independence. And I, I thought we needed to recognize that as the commission by reading it. So, do I have a motion to...
I'd make a motion, we approve the proclamation for, get to it, January 31st through February 6th, as National Catholic Schools Week.
Second.
Jen, would you...
I have a motion and a second to approve a proclamation declaring, declaring January 31st through February 6th, 2016, as National Catholic Schools Week.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item G, Consider an Agreement with Mercy Regarding Demolition of Portions of Property Donated at 800 West Myrtle. We have two citizens requesting to address the commission. First, Chuck Schmidt.
Thank you. I'm not a preacher like Reverend Montgomery, so I won't take my whole three minutes, I doubt. I'm here to address the issue of the demolition of the, a portion of the Mercy Building. I've been here several times, as we've had discussion of that, and I would like to say it's time to put this issue to rest, and get the development of health care in Independence moving forward. There are people in this audience whose jobs are dependent on St. John's being successful in developing a market share, and the delay in finalizing this deal with Mercy is jeopardizing that process. I would like to thank Mayor Koflish for taking my call yesterday. We had a good discussion. I'd like to repeat some of the points that I made in that discussion. Mayor Koflish, you're hesitating to approve the deal with Mercy because you want to protect the city, and I respect and understand that. I think everybody here probably would agree with that point. However, I would point out to you, you're not the only person involved in this decision who wants to protect the city. You have two city commissioners who both believe this should be undertaken. They know the facts, they've seen the information, they're well informed, and they believe this would protect the city. You have a city manager whose job it is to protect the city, who's seen all the facts, who's seen the contract, and has had the discussions, and believes this would protect the city, and, and wants us to move forward. You have a city attorney who has studied the contract, who knows the legal implications, and who understands what it involves, and wants us to move forward this, with this. And you have Heckman Associates Architects, who do extensive work for the city, who are telling you that we are protected, and this should be moved forward. It's time to take the word of these other experts and stop delaying this deal. If, if something should happen to go wrong, we have legal recourse. We can take them to court. The other thing to be considered is if, if Mercy gets fed up with this process, because this has been going on for a long time, I, I don't know how long, I mean, we've been in this process for two years, but this part has been going on for months, it seems like. And if they should pull out, the city would lose $500,000, and would still be responsible for any demolition of that building, and I think that would be very costly. I understand, Mayor, that you voted against accepting the hospital building for Mercy, and I understand that you voted against accepting a $100,000 lease per year for just St. John's. But those decisions have been made, and it's time now to move forward. It's time now for everybody to think about what's most, what's best for the city, and move forward with this partnership, get behind it, as the majority has spoken. I thank you, and I urge you to approve this deal, and let's move forward in proving health care in Independence.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Don Farthing has requested to address the commission.
I'm Don Farthing, 3015 North 8th Street. Mr. Schmidt stole my thunder, and we had not talked at all about this. I am a very frustrated citizen that we have not gotten off of dead center with this whole project, and we've spent way too much time. We need to approve the deal with Mercy, and move on, and try to get this community healed. We are divided community now, and it's, it's time that it stopped, and we got, got ourselves back together, working for the good of this community, and the citizens of the community. As he said, you have a lawyer here who has said everything is okay, let's go forward. If you don't believe him, then get rid of him, and fire somebody, hire somebody that you want, to agree with what you believe. I think he's a very upstanding gentleman. I'm just very frustrated, and I, I think we just got to move on and heal this community, and move forward, and I urge you to, to adopt this agreement, so that we can move forward and make our community the community it needs to be and wants to be. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that we've talked, Gary, you have a conflict of interest...
Correct.
...on this matter, so it is Fred and I. Later on, I had indicated a request, an item regarding conflict of interest. I know Jen had mentioned she had contacted the League, so if she could maybe, you're not prepared, no one told you?
I am prepared, but I don't know if we can jump agenda items like that. I guess I'm taken off guard.
Okay. I'll take care of it then.
Okay.
Gary, according to the League, when you've got a conflict of interest, then we're, as commissioners, to leave the table and not enter into discussion.
Okay.
So...
All right. Happy to do that.
So that, that will be fairly, fairly enforced, because it hasn't been in the past?
I think it was, if we're gonna talk about conflict of interest now, yes, Jen had checked and told me, and the next time it came up on the agenda for the Litwin Building, I did dismiss myself from the table, turned it over to the Vice Mayor to conduct business, and I had done it previously, but the one time I did stay here...
If we are gonna, gonna discuss conflict of interest, I will be happy to report on, on my conversation with the League, and it was in relation to a commissioner representing someone who was addressing the commission that evening, and what, so that was the background that I gave them on that particular discussion that we had. Their recommendation was, because the commissioner was involved and would be talking both as a commissioner and as a member of the, of the party addressing the commission, that to relieve all confusion that that commissioner should be out at the podium with the party addressing the commission. What I have not discussed is in general, conflict of interest. So after, the mayor and I actually had a discussion about this, and he asked if, if it would make sense that a commissioner, that when they have a conflict of interest, removes himself from the table. Now that things are videotaped, I think as far as transparency, that actually makes a lot of sense. It's very clear that they're not sitting at the table. I also contacted the city attorney, because I believe technically we need to follow his guidance, and I believe he said, overall, his recommendation might even be that you leave the room, so you can't be back there making gestures at each other and stuff like that. So I mean, just to make it completely clear, sorry. So just to make it completely clear that there's no conflict of interest. However, the conversation that I had with the League was specifically related to a commissioner who was representing someone who was speaking to the commission at that time.
And I don't see a need for a commissioner to leave the room to be that far off, because I think they should be aware of the discussion too, but the clarity, and I agreed with, with Jen representing clients of removing myself from the table, I could see the confusion there too, that, you know, that's what, we have the, the responsibility to make it as clear to the, the public as, as possible, and I have nothing against Gary. You know, I, this wasn't personal. It wasn't a vicious strike of, now I'm gonna get even. It was just, you know, we've had, had the discussion previously, and like, like Fred said, we need to be consistent in, in doing that, and it was just a, a point that we have that come up, and now is the time that we discuss it. That's what, why I brought it up, just so we could, could have a point and case, and make sure that we're in agreement. You know, if you don't mind Gary being here, that's fine for Gary to come back to the table. You know, I don't, I think we just, like you say, we have to be consistent.
I agree. I also think it's an individual decision, because only the person affected can declare a conflict of interest statutorily. And so, that's statute, by the way, so...
And I think Gary had declared...
He has.
Previously, when we first started talking about this, that he had a conflict of interest. So, you know, like I said, it's not, nothing against Gary's opinion, it's just...
Yeah. So, so to the item about approving the agreement, so where are we? Are we still at the same position we were last time?
Short answer is yes.
Short answer is yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So the stated goal is to protect the city, is that correct? So it seems to me like if we're gonna protect the city, we need to make sure that we take in effect, or take into account, the financial consequence that there's out there if we don't approve the agreement. And that consequence is, is the donation, that demolition, which is all totally, it ends up being 2 million, 2.1, whatever the number was. So it seems to me like by not approving this, we actually put citizens more at risk, a financial risk, because now they'll have to pick up the cost of demolition, and any other improvements that would go into the building. 2.9 million is, or 2 million, I strike that, it's not 2.9, 2 million is a lot of money to say we're protecting the city. I guess I don't understand that.
Well, you know, of course, we, this was all... Well, you know, of course, this was all negotiated prior to Mercy leaving, and in their agreement, they had outlined some of this information. They identified that they were going to take and remove all the asbestos and hazardous material, and that hasn't been added to anything that they weren't already saying that they were going to do. We'd been told that the plans and specifications say it, so I just said, put it in our contract then. We have no control over their drawings. Their drawings are means and methods of how they're going to accomplish their end. You know, what I've taken and I've scratched out, in accordance with the plans and specs, we're not responsible for those. We're not looking at them. We have no input to what they have. All we want is an end result. Then, at the conclusion of the project, Building D will operate properly. I said, at the conclusion of the project, Building D, HVAC systems will operate properly for the remaining structure. I've added two words there, and all it is, is defining what they've said. Well, it's in our papers, it's in our contracts, it's in our drawings, it's in our specs. Well, then, put it there, then. Put it in English, that's all. The last part, the existing contracts, I did want to strike J.E. Dunn contract. The existing contracts require that work be performed in compliance with all applicable laws, regulations, and ordinance, including environmental laws, so that all material deemed hazardous shall be removed. They're saying they're doing it, then just put it in words. It's not too much to ask. You know, and this, their buildings are on our property. They've said, time and time again, we're tearing them down, we're tearing them down, we're tearing them down. If they want access rights, then just write a contract, you have free access. You know, they brought the contract to us. We understood the buildings were coming down, with the verbal talk, with the letter of intent, with all the dialogue prior, they kept saying that, we're going to give you the 500,000, we're going to do this. And then they say, well, now, here's a contract we want you to sign for our property. That should have came from our attorney to them. It's our property, we want to protect our property. I don't care how they get it done, just don't leave any garbage on the property. Their specs say how much to take out, we want to make sure it's all, so that we have a point to say this was not done in our contract. We don't want to go back and look through their drawings, we don't want to go back and look through their specs. All we want to do is say, here, somebody missed this pile of asbestos that's buried here in the corner, you need to abate it, because we said all. All is hard to dispute. It's not too much to ask. I don't think it's being unreasonable. How can we hold up Jane Phillips moving in? We approved the lease, they've got rights to it, it's our building. Why is Jane Phillips worried about coming because of this demolition? At least, they're not tied together. You know, there's nothing that would hinder them from doing. Mercy can't come back and take the property, the deed says the property is the City of Independence. We have the rights to that property. They can't go up there to the Register of Deeds and say, well, we want our property back.
No, but Leonard, they can say, it's your building, go for it.
That's not our building. All this, the contracts-
I think the deed says it's our building, isn't it? With the quick thing deemed, I mean, isn't it legally our building now? Jeff?
I think the point you're making, I mean, is a legitimate point, and that was expressed by the citizens, is that if we mess with this too long, they'll say, okay, you apparently don't want us to do the demolition, do it yourself. I mean, that's the point we're talking about.
So that, is that, I mean, you're willing to risk that, is what you're saying?
I don't see a risk, I see it as, this is what, you know, where's the letter that they've rejected it? You know, do you want me to call her and talk to her? You know, I'll come over to your office, and we can make a conference call and work it out.
Jeff, you're a professional.
Well, from day one, the task I've been assigned is to satisfy one Commissioner and Mercy. And so far, they're, I think it's semantics, okay? But I won't go into specifics here, and I don't want to take up commission time with that, but I was handed a document just now with some changes that are a little different than what we had last meeting, and I see some problems-
I went back and simplified it.
I know, but I see some problems with it. But that's...
So it seems like we're... So the long and short of it is, is there's a real potential we're jeopardizing the donation from Mercy.
We can do a conference call, that's not a problem. I mean, that's the one thing we haven't-
This could go on forever. I mean, it's already gone on forever.
Not if, it won't go on forever if they just add those 11 words into it.
Well, that's what you say. There, it doesn't sound like they're going to say that, yet, as it was pointed out, Jeff, everybody else says, we're protected. So I-
We're protected in their documents. Their documents, not our documents.
Jeff, how would you respond to that statement?
Thanks, Fred.[973.00][973.00](LAUGHING). I'm not sure how to respond to that. I think we're protected, because in essence, we're standing in their shoes, contractually, with their contractors. I mean, we're almost a third-party beneficiary of their contracts, because we own the property now, and they're doing this really for our benefit, so...
Well, we don't want to be in their shoes with their contractors.
We're not, for liability purposes, we're not, but for benefit purposes, I think we almost are. We don't have any liability, you're right, to their contractor. I just, the second paragraph where you've added in HVAC systems, their sentence said, at the conclusion of the project, Building D will operate properly for the remaining structures. Well, to me, that means the whole building will operate properly, including the HVA systems. You've added in, at the conclusion of the project, Building D, HVA systems will operate properly for the remaining structures. That could be construed as limiting the operating properly, just to HVA systems. So I, little things like that, draftsmanship, I just, I don't think you want it that way. That's what you've given me.
Well, then, we could put systems including HVAC.
I think the way they have it covers everything. It was fine.
Okay, if they'll take that out and leave the rest, then?
So we've gone over this, and over this, and over this. Is there any other, Jeff, is there any other legal recourse? Is there something else that-
We can do a conference call, and try and resolve it that way. I mean, that's fine, we can set one up, be next week sometime.
So are we going to run up against a timeline issue with the demolition? I mean, this could go on and on and on, and it already has, go on and on and on. And it sounds to me like we're just at a standstill. Actually, it's a power play, is what it is.
I don't see it as a power play, I see it as, the most important issue is that the hazardous material has gone off the site, and we haven't addressed it. Why is it that they don't want to put that in there?
I don't think contracts like this generally have the phrase that says, all hazardous materials be removed, because there's a lot of stuff that could be deep down that you, that we'll never know about, unless you bore down and look for it. And like they say, that's not in the scope of the plans, they're going to, asbestos is required by law, and that's covered, it says they'll, you know, do the work according to all environmental laws. I think that's covered. You know, you could have a real estate transaction somewhere in the city, and it might have been a gas station there at one time, and be some hydrocarbons underneath, and it passes, changes hands two, three times, but then somebody drills and finds it, and that environmental law issue raises its ugly head, and everybody's scrambling, who pays for it? Well, the general rule is, if you're innocent, if you didn't put it there, you don't pay for it. It goes back to the owner who, if you can establish who did it. And also, there are funds at the state level to help with that. We've run into that on our streetscape project, when they found those barrels in front, I think it was Sarah's Hardware. You know, there's no perfect contract that's going to prevent something hazardous from ever being found anywhere. It just, most of you can usually say, do it according to law, and that usually protects you.
Well, let's talk to them and find out what their concern, and their hesitance to have that in. If that's what they're concerned about, buried unknown that might be there, then we can address that, too.
I think their concern is wording the agreement with us the same as they have it with their contractors. And so if their contractor's agreement is, you know, do it according to law, well, then they want that agreement to be with us the same.
But the law doesn't write to the extent. And basically, we want all removed from the area that the building is being removed. So we don't want any found later on the property when you start excavating. That would have been accidentally left or accidentally deposited.
I mean, your language is kind of extreme, and the reason I say that is, if you look at your language literally, it might be construed as requiring them to excavate every inch of the property down to a certain depth to look for stuff, though we don't know if it's there or not. And I don't, you know, most contracts involving real estate don't require that.
Well, find out what their concern is.
If there's this conference and there's no agreement that's reached, then what?
Well, we don't know.
Oh, yeah, we do.
How do we know there won't be an agreement reached?
Let's do the phone conference and see what happens.
Which means we jeopardize the dollars.
Yes, you can't get your attorney's letter.
No, I don't think so.
Monday?
It's at, they've got three attorneys. We'll try and get it set up as quick as we can.
Okay.
Do you want me to hang on to this?
Yeah. Okay. Move on.
I greatly appreciate that seat, that view of the discussion.
You have permission to return to the table.
I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Murray, I've been kicked out of better places.
Yeah, but were you sober?
Maybe not.
Yeah, the good old days, right?
Yesterday.
Okay. Item H, consider items requested by Mayor Coflysh. Item one, we've discussed.
So to, as the enforcer, it might understand that every time there's a conflict of interest, the Commissioner, with the conflict of interest, will leave the table? I mean, is that going to be protocol for our meetings?
Let me clarify that. The rules on conflict of interest are that the person that potentially has it has to declare it. The other persons can't make them declare it. Similarly, it's up to that person whether they feel they should leave the table, leave the room, or whatever, the others can't make them do that, I don't think.
Okay.
And I agree with you, it is recommended by the League that it occur, but the League will tell you also they can't make you do it.
Yeah. What's your pleasure on leaving the table, yes or no?
I just got through saying, three of you can take a vote, but I don't think you can, it's not enforceable. You can't, you can't, you know, pass a ordinance or resolution-
No.
-involving a state statute that's already existing on conflict. I mean, it's there the way it is now.
Right, but it doesn't, the statute doesn't address leaving the table, that's up to us, then.
I'm just talking about a standard, a tradition, not necessarily enforceable, just among the board.
Yeah.
A policy.
I'm just saying, I don't think you could have done one.
Okay. I think we've got the conflict of interest discussed. Item number two, review of executive session guidelines. I noticed on the Board of Education, with executive sessions, that on the agenda, they list, instead of just executive session, but they'll go ahead and list the statute and the reason. This came up from last week, when we had the executive session. As far as the Commissioners, none of us knew if there was going to be an executive session or not, and it was a little confusing whether to go on or wait. And after seeing how they presented their agenda with, and if there's, like, we had multiple executive sessions, each one was identified with the reason, and it kind of had a blank that you could fill in at time. I thought, you know, that would really give us a heads up, so as we approached the end of the commission meeting, we would know whether there will or there won't be one. That if it just is blank, that's a spot we reserve for executive session, but if it doesn't identify one, then we'll know to stop and allow time for that and how to proceed. Also, somebody had prepared these little cards that kind of give a guide on executive sessions, so it'll help. Kind of explains the different aspects of the meeting, and each item is a guideline of what goes in. So I thought it'd be helpful to, of course, give us always more education is better, but as we approach that executive session, part of our meeting, a little more consistency and help the flow.
Whoever printed these was under 30, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
See, this is pretty, I got new glasses, luckily.
Yeah, good.
And they went ahead and laminated them, so what I did was put it on a copy and enlarged it.
You enlarged it?
Yeah.[1627.15][1627.15](LAUGHING) For my own personal stash.
Wow.
I'm glad you enlarged it.
No, no.
City staff-
I enlarged that out.
City staff has a book called the Kansas Governmental Handbook, that has a chapter, and I know I've Xeroxed for Commissioners in the past, that actually takes it about three steps further, it gives you examples of situations.
And their orientation.
Yeah, and it's even better, it's in bigger print, too.
That's not the handbook that the Commissioners get, is it a different one?
It's probably the same one, put up by Mr. Heim, the fourth or fifth-
And your orientation.
It's a three-ring binder.
Oh, no, ours is just a spiral-bound book.
Different.
Yeah, the League.
I know that Mickey and or Jen may have copies in their offices, I've seen them.
And do you need to order copies if you would like to do this?
They're not at that expensive, they're a good bookstain.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
What about the times you have an executive session that we did not know about, when the packets go out? Then what do we do?
We wing it, like we normally do.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure if we have permission to wing it, so just clarifying.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's nothing wrong with winging it.
All right.[1713.15][1713.15](LAUGHING).
I don't think there's a statute against winging.
Okay.
So you'll get the guidelines for us, then?
I'll be happy to order those, do you each want one?
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the number three was, just guessing, regarding the removal of restrictions or not removing, that there's been a little bit of confusion. Jeff, when we've talked, and we had the dialogue a couple weeks ago, that the restrictions were removed from the property. And then, last week, when we were talking, Mickey said that the restrictions were still there, so...
I think, something's been attributed to me, I don't know that I said, there was a conversation at one meeting where you were asking about the letter of intent, and I remember, with Mercy, I remember saying, you know, we didn't sign that, so it's not binding on anybody. And then, we'd had the deeds recorded, and we knew there were restrictions in the deeds, and then someone asked, does that restrict our ability to- And then someone asked, does that restrict our ability to sell the property? And I thought my response was, those restrictions don't prevent us from selling the property. Now, I've been told that people interpret that as saying, and I said there weren't restrictive covenants in the deeds. Well, that's not true, because they were always, they were there. And you and I talked about that, and, you know, you're, they're there.
Yeah, I, I guess I was surprised with the, the quitclaim deed that we got before the meeting, showed no restrictions, and then to see the deed filed with restrictions, that, you know, it's, with the restriction, does that form a contract between us and the owner on the property?
You know, I understand your point, I don't think it does under those circumstances, because you're correct, the deed on December seventeenth that was presented to us when we voted to, or the city commission voted two to one to accept the donated property, the deed form they sent us, well, it was really just a blank deed. It didn't have the names of the parties, didn't have the legal descriptions, and it certainly didn't have the restrictive covenants. And then it was voted that we would accept the donation, and then on January four, I believe it was, the deeds were recorded, and here we go, the restrictive covenants in there. And, and actually, you didn't vote on that, but they put it in, so, you know. And I discussed with you the options. One option would be to call them, and actually, I did call them a little and talk to them about it. But I said, you know, we could, one option would be to deed the property back to Mercy, hoping they'd still deed it back to us, and ask them to send us a clean quitclaim deed with no restrictions. But if we did that during the time it was in their name, they could record a declaration of restrictions as a freestanding document, which they did on the St. John's issues anyway. And I don't know why they didn't do it on these other issues. The, the issues we're talking about are some abortion restrictions that they put in the deed. And, and we've known that they were going to do that probably since last June or July, because when we negotiated CRMC, that, we were discussing who would receive the property, and they said, well, the Wichita Diocese requires us to do this. So I, you know, understand your point, but, you know, we could try and undo it, but I think the end result would be the same. We could get a deed with no restrictions, but then we'd have a declaration of restrictions with restrictions. So if you want me to pursue that, I can. I mean, I offered to do that two weeks ago. And you said you weren't sure, and that's fine, and I've just been waiting for direction.
Well, the, I guess restrictive, the declaration of restrictions restricts the use for, of the hospital, as a hospital, medical clinic, other healthcare enterprise. So it's pretty extensive on the declaration. And that covers all the property that we were given, and they're exhibits of their legal description. So they have on each deed the abortion, which, you know, I, I can understand that, and that's, but the restrictive use for the hospital, that's when we were talking. And when, when we had the St. John's lease, I brought up, you know, do we want to look at changing the profile or for the imaging to look at where we had the emergency room and, and open up to look at an emergency management company for the space, or, you know, what do we want to do with this restriction? Nothing medical can go into the building at all, and I don't, some of our other, a lot of our other contracts, when we get them to approve as a commission, they're not filled out. We're just assumed that they are complete, other than the names and the dates filled out. When I went back and checked some of our other agreements, they, they were partially completed, but dates and names, just similar to the quitclaim deed, was, was submitted. And that's where it appears at that point that no restrictions were going to be on the property, and then, you know, the, the restrictions appeared. So what, what have we agreed to and not to? Once we accept the deed, then we've accepted the contract in the, in the terms of those restrictive covenants.
Okay, you're talking about the declaration of restrictions, not the restrictions in the deed.
All of them form restrictions.
Right, but-
All of them are restrictive covenants, aren't they?
Yes. What you, in a, in a real estate, this is a very unique situation, because we voted to accept donated real estate. We didn't agree to any restrictions. But that doesn't stop them from unilaterally putting them in place, which is what happened in real short terms. I mean, that's, that's what happened. I, in private practice, you see that every once in a while, where you, I signed a contract to sell my forty acres in the country to Jen Rutledge, and right before closing, I reserve an easement for fishing rights in the pond. It wasn't there when I said to sign the contract, but there's nothing in the contract that says I can't do that. I didn't ask her permission, I just did it, I record the easement, I can fish in the pond. Now, if she has a title search done and wants to object to that, she might do that, but, I mean, it, it does happen. And as long as they own the property, and with the St. John's thing, you know, everybody we negotiated with, you know, LaBette, Coffeyville, St. John's, whoever, wanted to be the exclusive in independence, because I think they, they feel that that's the way they can best make it work financially. And you also remember that Mercy told us they wouldn't give their real estate, or, you know, the practice, the clinic, to anyone but St. John's, we've been through that. So you've got all that going on, too, it's, it's a complicated situation. And the restriction that's not in the deed dealing with St. John's is a restriction that only applies so long as St. John's is running that clinic over there. And if they leave, then that restriction disappears.
Yeah, the, I guess it was confusing to see that we're told there were no restrictions, but yet comes down that there were and, and-
I don't think we were told there were no restrictions. I don't know who, who you think told us that.
Well, when we were discussing it a couple of weeks ago.
Well, no, I thought you meant before December seventeen vote. That would be the determin, that's when we voted, you voted, to accept the donated real estate. I don't think there were any statements made by anybody that said that Mercy wouldn't put some restrictive covenants on there to protect St. John's and to do their religion thing on abortion. I don't think there were any representations made at all. In fact, the only way that could be voted on by a full commission was no strings attached. It's just a straight donation of real estate.
Yeah, for, for all three of us to vote, there had to be no strings attached to the property, right?
Yes.
So that allowed all three of us to vote, but there are strings attached now.
They were attached after we voted, and we didn't consent to them, we didn't agree to them, they did that on their own. Now, whether, I mean, if you want to ask them, did they intend to do that all along? You have to find out, I don't know, but they didn't tell us, they didn't represent to us that they wouldn't do that, and they didn't represent to us they would. I mean.
Just, you know, I see it as a cloud in the, in the issue of transparency, because I know, you know, just as Gary was talking the seventeenth, and mentioned that he had no conflict because there was zero value to the property. That's what he understood, that there wouldn't be. That's what I understood, that there weren't anything, because a gift can't be a gift if it's got strings attached, so. I guess that explains, to a certain point, the discussion that, that we had two meetings ago, talking about the contract, and then as Mickey brought up last week, the, the restrictions were there.
You and I had that discussion longer ago than that, I mean, I'm still, I'm trying to say I told you there weren't restrictions. I dispute that, I'm-
No, I'm not saying, you didn't say, you said there were no restrictions in our conversation, and you said in our discussion in the commission meeting that there were no restrictions.
He was referring to resale.
On resale, I was asked if you could, because these restrictions existed, does that hamper our ability to turn around and sell some of these properties? I said, there's no restriction on resale.
No, I don't remember talking about resale.
I think we're on different planes, wavelengths.
We were talking about utilization of the space and for potential doctors coming in, or with the restrictive declaration, nothing medical can go in to the hospital building.
That's not true.
As long as St. John's here, as long as St. John's is operating in independence, nothing medical.
Unless they approve it.
Okay.
Jeff, wouldn't it have been true if it would have been Coffeyville or LaBette or anybody else?
Yes.
I mean, those same, I mean, the same thing could have happened there.
The same restrictions would be in place for any other entity had Mercy chosen to work with any other entity.
Right.
I'm fully convinced of that. They really wanted St. John's, there's no, you know, it's no mystery about that, so.
Yeah, the, the point was of the impression there were none from the quitclaim deed, and then finding the deed was filed with restrictive covenants.
Well, they could have done the same thing.
But we could reject them, too, we could have drawn it, we could have brought the question.
If it was Coffeyville or anybody else, the same thing could have happened. And is that, is it what I understand you're saying, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they could do it to whoever.
So if it would have been LaBette or if it had been Coffeyville, would you have been against? I mean, would you have been as insistent?
Yeah, because the indication to us was there were no restrictions. It, it's not who or what, it's just that the property is not free and clear for us to use.
I'm not following it. Okay, that's fine.
Item, item I, if you so choose. Consider direction relating to adoption of an ordinance to comply with new statutes concerning election and reorganization of the governing body. Jeff, do you have?
I threw together, and I didn't throw together, but I emailed staff, because I'd like staff to proofread it, make sure I didn't screw up, but a couple of ordinances. What the background is, is the 2015 Kansas Legislature repealed, I think, roughly thirty-eight statutes that have been in existence since the early nineteen hundreds, and some amendments, of course. Many of them having to do with what we call the commission manager form of government, which our voters adopted, I think it was in the late nineteen seventies. We have what's called a strong manager form of government. The city manager basically runs the day-to-day affairs, commission does policymaking legislation, and that's been in place for forty-some years. Well, they repealed all the state statutes, and they replaced it with one statute. And it's, a lot of turmoil, and there still is a little. And I put together, I worked with the league, there's some things you can do by charter ordinance, and some that you don't have to do by charter ordinance. But we also, at the same time, in addition to these state statutes that were repealed, there's a series in the city code, I think it's city code sections two dash twenty-five through two dash thirty-six. And they kind of mimicked the state statutes. So I tried to go through and pull out everything we'd been doing traditionally, including our ordinances, and put them in one new ordinance, and staff is going to look at it, and I think I'm going to ship it to you guys, let you guys pick it apart. But the, the one issue is because the legislature changed the voting cycle. It's now November, it used to be April. And if you'll recall, if you were elected at April, in the April election, you'd take off, office, the first meeting after the canvass of the votes could be two weeks later. Well, now you can meet, you're elected in November, you don't take office till sometime in January. So the fall, is it November of eighteen, twenty eighteen is the next, or is it November twenty seven? No, November twenty seventeen will be the next election, but you won't take office till twenty eighteen.
Right, January.
January, yeah. Second Monday. But anyway, the, then I, the staff said, well, we used to do our annual reorganization in April. Do we stay like this till next January? Do we try and adhere to about one year per mayor? So talked about doing the reorganization like February, and then switched to January next year. And so I incorporated that in here also. And we will, after staff looks at it, ship it to you guys to discuss.
Did you see the sample ordinance on the league's website?
I reviewed, I think, five to eight ordinances that were given to me by the staff attorney at the league.
They had one that seemed pretty simple in dealing with what they, they were recommending for the, the change. It is kind of confusing with the dates, but it, it seemed pretty, pretty straightforward and, and simple. But when you got to modify the city ordinances to coexist with that.
Well, what I ended up doing was repealing all the existing city ordinances and then try and merge them with the state statutes that we were used to following. And you'll see, I'm sure they'll get it to you early next week.
Okay.
Sounds exciting.
Yep.
Making progress.
Next item reports, report on grants recently submitted.
We have submitted the grants for, once again, for ladder truck and for SCBA equipment. And the police department is doing a, a small one that they will match with their own funds out of the, the funds they get from enforcement. We're very hopeful on those grants this year due to our circumstances. We got ahold of our elected officials last year, but it was, I think, after the decisions had been made. I think with our situation, I think we have a real good chance of getting one or both of those first two grants.
The ladder truck and the SCBA?
We're, we're very hopeful because of our hospital situation.
So we've applied for that SCBA grant.
Oh, yeah.
Several years in a row, so, I mean, it seems to me like our term's coming up
very quickly, at least I'd hope so.
Our, our part of the, the grants, do we have that in our 2016 budget?
What we have in the 2016 budget is a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars budgeted for SCBAs. So it's, it's one of those things that if we were to get that grant, then, then those funds are available, obviously, for both of the grants, if we were about to get them, because that cost is a little bit higher than the cost that's reflected here. So I would say, yes, we're covered, unless for some reason we find something far more expensive than what we've applied for the money for.
So we wouldn't have to go to a lease purchase, we could pay out of funds and-
Absolutely, yes.
What's the, the mobile forensic software?
That, that is software, and actually, we can give you the good news already, we've received the grant. That is software for cracking cell phones, when those are part of the evidence process. My understanding from Mark is that we have to send those off to get any evidence off of them, and that can take months for someone else to, to get into the phones and pull any data off of it. And this will give us some flexibility to be able to do so locally and not have to wait months for what we need.
So we did receive that grant?
We have received that grant, yes.
Agreed.
You just got notification, wow, that's good, that's great. That's great.
That is.
That's fantastic.
I'd rather get the big one, but it's a good start.
It's a good start.
We'll take, we'll take, we'll take it.
Absolutely.
We'll take it.
Sometimes you got to have two fish instead of one big one. But it's still a meal. Okay, great. Well, do you have any idea when the notification on the other two?
No, we just, we just recently submitted those.
Okay.
So it's just been, within the last month, we've submitted them.
Okay. Good. Item K, 2015 accomplishments.
Yeah, this is one we, we've got on there for the individual department heads to report, just hitting the highlights. You'll be able to get the full report in written form later, if not today, early next week, but I'll take, she's got them today. And we'll have it back on the agenda next time or very soon to get more discussion and more detail. But right now, just to hit the highlights, and they'll, they'll all be very brief. Who's first?
You are. Actually, the first slide is the commissioners just, a few things here, that we've got two new commissioners in fifteen and then?
Already won an award.
Yeah, and then you guys got an award.
Right.
And Gary wasn't absent and I don't know if he ever got his gift or not.
I did it.
And then we had the city board training, that was after that ethics resolution was passed and the city attorney conducted training for that. And then I'll let Mickey go over these quickly. Mickey?
Yeah.
You're up.
I know.
Okay.
I'm looking for my list.
Now be brief.
Three minutes, to be exact. I'm timing you.
She got the orange card ready.
You got your card ready.
If you prefer.
Yeah, the, we completed the phase one and phase two of the curb ramp projects. We also completed the GIS system, which puts all of our infrastructure, all of the city infrastructure on mapping. Sanitary sewer system and water system are on there. The signage and landscape plan. And we renewed the downtown Laurel Street, industrial park and West Main neighborhood revitalization plans. And we had a veterans parade in Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And the Heartland Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Memorial located near the airplane. And continued to partner with Chamber to co-sponsor a monthly community update first Friday. Participated in the, in organization of the 2015 awards banquet and co-sponsored the Trees Up campaign. West Star installed LED streetlights in the downtown. They are now doing it, as you know, on Main Street. We issued bonds for Cessna, ethics training for all city employees by KU. And we had hiring and recruiting training for all supervisors and department heads, also by KU. We funded replacement of the manual vacuum and seventy watt LED and worked with the building supervisory committee and Montgomery Action Council to market J.C. Penney Building. And the city's bond rating was upgraded to A plus in 2015. We, that's enough. That's the highlights.
We also placed second in the contest.
Oh, the shootout photo contest.
Out of fifty-nine cities, we, we got second, so that was kind of, I would like to have gotten first, but, but we still did really, really well compared, you know, we were, we were facing cities like Wichita and these huge cities that have huge populations, so we did outstanding, I thought.
See, we were close, weren't we?
Very close.
Very close.
Hayesville kind of got dirty at the end, so I'm just saying.
Who's up next?
We, then we, this is just some activities that we do relating to some, some other responsibilities. There was a lot of layers added to our GIS system and we modified some layers. And then planning commission was a little light this year compared to some other years, but I, we do have some projects in the works, I think, this year will be, have a lot more activity. So David?
Public safety was very busy last year with healthcare and everything else and the chiefs will talk about their departments. As far as the work comp, one less injury in 2015 versus 2014. However, our dollars are up, about doubled. Slip strips, falls and strains are our number one injuries and it's something that we really have to continue to work on. It's pretty much across the board. Annual health fair was a success. That has always been a success since we started this. Every year, a serious illness was found last year and that employee was able to get some treatment and is alive today because of that. So that's always very rewarding when that happens. Safety committee has undertaken a project with all of the departments and totally redoing our policies and we're halfway through that process, hope to finish up, again, our yearly immunizations and flu shots and all that the city provides. All of our employees are trained in first aid and CPR and we all enjoyed the healthy lifestyle talk. I don't know if we all follow it well from Dr. Hogshead, so.
And then on the community orchard project, we had a lot of participation. Some went a little bit more extreme than others. And a lot of the staff got into it and pitched in and helped and it was a great project with a lot of volunteers and thanks to the Hogsheads that started that and even have Steve on the shovel there, so.
He didn't actually shovel anything, he just picked it up.
It kind of looked like he did.
Yeah.
Fire EMS department, we ran two thousand five hundred and two medical calls in 2015, quite a few. The department, and this is EMS, generated seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred, ninety-five dollars in revenue in 2015. It was our third consecutive year to be scored with a perfect score from the Board of EMS, which puts us in the top five to ten percent. They were pretty sketchy trying to give us any details this year about that, but we're in the top five to ten percent of all EMS services in the, in the state. We ramped up our ambulances to five ALS-equipped ambulances over the three that we had previously. Nominated Keith, Captain Keith Kapitki is our fire EMS employee of the year, very deservedly so. We made two thousand and twenty-five, to the best of my account, student contacts with fire prevention education this year. We currently have, Larry McHugh is working on a DVD, came out and actually filmed the programs and is putting together a DVD of that fire prevention education program that we do. So hopefully we'll have that sometime in the future here. We completed two hundred and, or two thousand three hundred and fifty-two hours of fire and EMS training department-wide. That's, that's pretty extraordinary. We gave away a couple of extraordinary performance awards to Renell and, and Pat this year for just exemplary service in the field. They, they did some really great things. And that brings us to building and I'm going to let Jim talk to you about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just to hit some highlights, for the total building valuation, we, it was over two million fifty-seven one eighty. That included residential and commercial. The city removed thirty-three condemned structures this year, or past year. Eight of those, eight properties were also removed by property owners and five condemned structures were removed from the condemnation list due to being rehabilitated. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Hello.
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 We received a little over fourteen thousand calls for service, 2015, or fourteen. Six hundred and ninety felony misdemeanor arrests were made during that time period. And our local school resource officer, he worked with the school district, gives programs to the kids at schools, spent an estimated twelve hundred and fifty hours. Our department purchased one patrol unit and a animal control vehicle to utilize. We upgraded a laser fish program with our computer systems that were, just recently started using that. And then the new telephone system was installed, which everybody hates, but we're figuring it out.
Perfect. Got to get used to it.
Oh, yeah. New stuff's bad to get used to. Chief Smith retired after his thirty-one years of service. And then we have Lieutenant, he's now our animal control officer. Our previous animal control officer left to go back home after her husband had passed away, get closer to family and friends. But this Charlie Benedict, he's, he was a lieutenant. He still does patrol and animal control and he's been doing with the women's self-defense courses. Approximately a hundred and sixty women that, that have came to those courses and, and it's gone really well. It's well-received and, and he's really good at it, so. She's not wanted anymore, we found her. She's in the officer cross hall. And then Tammy, who's kind of the pulse down there, she's been around a little longer than I have, so if I need something, I go to her. Anybody else needs something for me, I go to her.
You're the middle man.
AWOL, no clue. Kelly gave me this, but again, I don't, I'm a detective in the, in the police department, so unless somebody gets killed by a dog, I usually don't care about it.
I will say the adoptions and reclaims were up from last year, which is always a good thing. They're really good with their low-cost spay and neuter program and if anybody, you know, is interested in that, they can contact AWOL and that really will, it does help with their numbers if people participate in that. And they do a great job.
And there was a real nice reception for Chief Smith on his retirement. He'll certainly be missed. But we have had a good response with resumes for the position. I think we've got about thirty from all over the country. We're going to be starting Skype interviews, probably if not next week, the week after. I think it closes on tomorrow, actually, twenty ninth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
At City Hall, you're very aware of what we've done with the phone system and the cost estimates. And you know that we've extended the clerk's office hours, which after several months is finally starting to show some fruit, having people come in. You can see the dollars that we've collected through the various forms of fees sent out by the city. And you guys are more than aware that Tony Royce retired and you get to deal with me now. We honored Carol McGlaughlin for ten years of service and then rewarded Lydia Collins for the work that she's done this year. You can see the numbers on the next page for municipal court as well.
As you can see, we, once again, provided fifty thousand to the city for their unsafe structures demolition. I'm happy to announce that the housing authority has agreed to do so again in 2016. So we will continue to assist people with removing unsafe structures in the community. We received a ninety thousand tenant-based rental assistance grant where we were able to assist fifty-two families in 2015 with their housing expenses. So those fifty-two families, out of those, it was ninety-eight individuals. So lots of families. Provided two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a homeowner rehabilitation grant citywide. We received eighteen applications. I'm happy to announce that we've gone through our first group of inspections and we should be working with contractors over the next thirty days. We'll be letting out bids for those first six applicants and we will get some homeowners their houses rehabbed. We're happy that the commission worked with us to put in a new park across from Penn Terrace. We're thrilled to announce its name of the Robert Augustus Wesley Park. Mr. Wesley has been a good founding member of the housing authority and has been very dear to us and the community as well. We've had a blast down at Penn Terrace. We in, took, endeavored many activities. We took them out to Elk City Reservoir to play games and fishing. We did an old-fashioned picnic out at the zoo. We had a fish fry where staff. Now, I had to explain to their wives that they really did need to go out and catch fish. It wasn't an excuse, but they caught over fifty pounds of fish to feed the entire Penn Terrace tenants. We went out to Little House on the Prairie. We had a book discussion prior to, they loved that excursion. And we hosted a nostalgia matinee down at the Independent Cinemas, which we're going to do again in March. Here we are out at Elk City. You can see the ladies down below. We had our backup plan of Auntie May's because the gentlemen kept telling us the big ones kept getting away. So I'm happy to announce the Upper Story Grant. The housing authority provided a hundred thousand dollars in 2015. We had four applications with seven units. As of the end of December, first of January, we have three of those units completed and ready for rent-up. Actually, one unit is rented. We stole a family from Coffeyville who chose to move over to Independence because they loved the apartment upstairs. They moved in right before Niwala, had prime seating, had a costume party up there. They're loving it. So it's been a huge success. One of the other things that IHA staffed endeavor this year, and we had a blast, we normally work with a high school on their community service day and we did that in the morning and we worked with four classes. We did projects up at North McKinley and over at Penn Terrace and did some work across the park from City Hall. And then in the afternoon, we did a team building. Oh, we're not there yet. The afternoon, we did a team building. You gave my, my thunder away. We did a team building exercise in the afternoon where we worked on the park across from City Hall. It was a blast. It was great for us as employees to get away from the day-to-day and just have a good time while providing something. I had the benefit of being able to sit there and look at the pretty flowers, so it was nice. And then today was National Have Fun at Work Day and we decided to take on all the departments with a silly string attack, so thank you.
And you had some service awards.
Oh, 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 my service awards. I can't forget my incredible employees. Molly has been with us for five years. You can't come into City Hall without hearing Molly. And Matt Haygood, he is my right-hand man and he is awesome. They both have served with us for five years. And Marilyn is the woman who knows it all and she has been with us for ten years and I'm extremely proud of all of our employees. They do an astounding job.
Thanks, April.
Start with the airport. The 2015, about a little over a hundred and ninety thousand gallons of fuel were sold, which generated about five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And we still coated runway seventeen thirty-five and Milton overlay of the north half of Parallel Taxiway A. Memorial Hall, that's all the room rentals there. And in 2015, it generated a little over forty-four thousand in rental income, which is an increase of sixty-three percent over last year. And Toni Camacho, which works here at Memorial Hall, she was the public works employee of the year. A few other things, we purchased new spotlights for the auditorium, a new floor scrubber and replaced the commercial water heater. Sanitation, sanitation department picked up an estimated sixty-three hundred and eighty-four tons of garbage, three hundred and thirty-seven miscellaneous work orders, participated in Niwala cleanup and generated a little over a million dollars. And we had Jason Coulthart got an award for fifteen years of service. That's a picture of the sanitation crew. The second wide, second citywide cleanup, three hundred loads at the yard, six loads at the brush dump, seventeen pickups by volunteers, total of three hundred and twenty-three total participants. Completed reconstruction of West Main, Tenth Street to Overpass. Clink project was Penn Avenue from West Oak to Morningside and East Main from Park Boulevard to Seaman Street. And the Tenth and Chestnut geometric project was completed this year and with, with no idea. And the 10th and Chestnut geometric project was completed this year with new additional traffic signals. And the traffic signals at Penn and Oak were updated with LED lights and video detection. West Main ribbon cutting on the 4th of December. Street contracted for new sidewalk on North 13th. And we installed crosswalk lights out there at 13th and Spruce. Drain lids, large trees. Completed 1,072 work orders for brush pickup. Seasonal banners, traffic street signs, participating in community cleanup, Neowalla cleanup. That's the street crew. The city received an award from CCAP for collaborative excellence on some drainage work around their building. And Mike DeVore got a 10-year service award from the Street Department.
Hey, Mike. That fuel sales of a half million dollars? Do we make any money on that?
Well, case around the airport.
Thanks.
Good evening. Park and Zoo. I was going to start with cemetery. Okay, thanks. The cemetery, you see the figures on the burials, the cremation and spaces sold, and that was an increase in overall of 48%. We approximately have 1,148 spaces left. And the increase in doing cremations have increased. The staff happened to work 23 Saturdays this past year. So that's kind of a change in what they've used to do. They used to hardly work any Saturdays. Basically, the challenge they had in the cemetery, like always, most of the time, we had a lot of rain, a lot of mowing. Park? Okay, and the park projects, we worked on the miniature train, the engine, and the Logan Fountain Project's still going on. We're working on that. The ticket booth was completed. And the Veterans Memorial, Heartland Vietnam Vets did the memorial, and that was completed this year. We had 20 activities in the zoo, and there's a list of all of them. I won't go through all of them since Jen's restricting my time. Christmas in the park was awesome. You guys have to come out next year. The Easter egg hunt hung. And here's just some of the flyers that we had for the, you know, activities in the Park and Zoo. School visits, we have, you know, in May, we have about 30 schools that come visit. We give them tours if they want, rides with the train, the merry-go-round, and it's a good field trip for the schools. We gave over seven, staff gave over seven talks to different organizations, and that's itemized here. And our park rentals and usage is a breakdown here of each building and everything there. And that's just a breakdown of the carousel rentals. We started a donation box last year, and it's really helped in keeping the five-cent tradition of the merry-go-round, but yet bringing in a little bit more revenue on that. Our extraordinary performance went to Rachel Lyon this year from the Park Department. New animals, we had a baby bison born, elk born. We purchased two pot-bellied pigs and a golden red pheasant, and we hatched out two ducklings ourselves. And the improvements, the big improvement was Monkey Island. As you can see, we've got a lot of the cleaned-out Monkey Island. And if you see the second photo in the middle, that's all the junk we cleaned out. And then on the bottom is they put in rock, and now it's real clean, and it's really nice. Stevens Building, we're about 90% done with that. We're replacing the electrical and the AC system. Four Paws bought us a new commercial refrigerator. It's awesome. It's great. Zoo activities, we had our second Zoo Loeween. We doubled our money. So between that, and we put a donation box in, and between the two of them, we raised 5665. So that will go back into the zoo. And then our fifth year with the Vet Tech Program, that's going good. And they come out, and we're kind of the works time for them to come out and work with our staff. Boy, she's going fast. Eagle Stout Project, we had Jacob Hoag and Micah Hoakum, and we had two eagle projects done. Jacob did cleaning down in the ravine, and Micah did trash can containers. Jim Duke did 15 years of service, and he works primarily in the zoo. And Jade Wagner was Employee of the Year at the Park and Zoo.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make this quick. Jen said if I do it in 45 seconds, she'll pay me a dollar. Insert collection, it says we replaced 140 feet of sewer line. We also replaced 250 over by City Hall that's not in there. Tipple cleaning, 80,000 feet of sewer man cleaned. We did receive a $500,000 grant for sewer work. We replaced birdie lift station. At the sewer plant, we processed 97,000, or yeah, 97 tons of biosolids, which are spread on the crop grounds. There's a lot of slides there that we won't go into. They're real enthusiastic about that. We treated 673 million gallons of wastewater that generated over $2 million in revenues. Of course, we did annual cleaning and repairs and maintenance. There's one thing that's not on there. We did rebuild a mixer in the Aeration Basins. We have, Eric LaQuay had 10 years of service at the wastewater treatment plant. He also received an award for extraordinary performance. And Kevin Henry was Employee of the Year in Utilities. He's an operator at the water treatment plant. And water distribution, kind of a light year, not a whole lot compared to normal years. We constructed the human foosball for the city picnic. The frame for the downtown movie screen, just some highlights. Water treatment plant, not a lot going on there. We do have a lot of work needs to be done there. But we did get the liquid alum going, and that's all done now, and we're working on electrical issues out there now. We treated almost 700 million gallons of water and generated right at 1.5 million in revenue.
Ed Sykes Service Award?
Yeah, 10 years.
No worries.
That was not 45 seconds.
You're safe, huh?
What was the time, then?
2 minutes and 38 seconds.
Terry, you didn't mention the water main break downtown. That was the most amazing thing I've ever seen.
Yes.
The sidewalks and streets coming up, and I thought the street's going to be closed for weeks, and traffic was driving there, it seemed like, hours later. I don't know how you did that. That was amazing.
And they're still driving over it, but it has some major issues that are going to have to be dealt with.
Sure, but it was amazing that you got it up that fast. I think it was the day of the parade, too, I know. Weren't we about to have a parade or something?
Christmas parade?
Yeah.
I think it was the day.
Yeah. I thought the parade was going to be called off for sure.
I wondered.
I wondered.
Those crews, all type of weather, cold, water leaks there out there, and there's no way to stay dry.
I've always waited for one of those type lakes at about 10:30 in the morning on Neowalla Grand Parade.
Wow.
It's never happened yet.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, for the social committee, Lydia would be here, but she lives in Cherryvale, and I gave her 28 seconds, and she didn't want to stay for just 28 seconds tonight. So the social committee has done a fabulous job implementing the fish philosophy. You can see that in one of the slides, we actually ended up with a dance-off at one of our safety meetings. They've done events. It was worth a Yeti Cup, just for the record. You may laugh, but those were going for big bucks on Amazon.
We should have had Larry there for that. That's what he should be recording.
They did a great job planning the picnic. They did a fall social. And then, of course, they are responsible for the awards banquet that a couple of you were able to be at. The events for next year are already scheduled out. They're going to pull off one each quarter that's going to be, they have some great plans for how to get employees excited and motivated to have fun. Today was Have Fun at Work Day, and there was an awful lot of fun had, so I'm hoping we can all recover and go back to work tomorrow.
These are just the various Facebook pages and the number of likes that the city currently has. And then these are the group pictures of the service awards. And we'll have this online so that people can, you know, look at it slowly and could actually read some of this stuff. We have 318 Twitter followers, but we tweeted 2,472 times. And we had over almost 41,000 visits to the city webpage, and we will be sometime this year, get our new city webpage launched. We're still working on some little minor design issues, but is very close. And we had, besides all the states in the United States, we also had 128 countries access the city's website. And the top three were India, Canada, and United Kingdom. So Britain fell off this year, just letting you know. So we are hoping to have some major accomplishments in 2016. The first big one is going to be the recycling that's starting very soon, the first Saturday in February. And this is our brand spanking new recycling trailer. And it looks much better than some samples we've seen. And we are ready for recycling.
I was reading that we're supposed to sort, but how does that keep anything sorted?
Mike?
It doesn't.
Why are we telling people to sort their recycling, then?
You sort it, you put it in the trailer, you throw it in the trailer, you take it up, and we take it up and dump it. I'm sure when we back in there, we're going to have to sort it ourselves, so.
Okay.
So if they're bags, you know, if they bag?
Yeah, if it's bagged.
Like paper or?
Yeah, when it goes in the building, it'll have to be sorted.
Yeah, I see. Okay, thank you.
Cans, you know, that kind of thing. Okay, busy.
Outstanding.
We had all the reports.
That one. And then you just had minutes from the rec commission in your packet.
Well, comments about the accomplishments?
It's amazing to see how busy you actually are during the year. Seems like every year, it's busier.
Yeah. And I think you look at all that going on, the impact it has to, on the public as they come visiting Independence. The workers on the street are the ones that make the impression. Them doing their job makes Independence what it is. Every employee in the water department, anyone meeting the public is what makes Independence. So if somebody wants to come back and visit or look at residing, the condition at the park and the cemetery, the streets, everybody has done really a good job, I think, of keeping things attractive for the public that, you know, we owe all of them thanks for that. Terry's workers, a lot of theirs is underground that nobody sees it, like you mentioned, the water leak downtown. The crews responded quickly, got it done. That was moderate weather, but I've seen them when it's freezing, and they're still down there intent on getting the problem fixed. That's the clean water side now. The other, the guys are still there working to keep, shall we say, things flowing, which is really important, too. But I do want to thank the department heads to extend the commission's thanks to your staff also for us. Okay, the next item would be the report on city board minutes. Commissioners have reviewed those. Any questions about the minutes? Okay. Executive session?
Employee, what is it? Yeah, unelected personnel.
Not elected personnel. Attending will be the
Commission.
Commission. And city manager.
10 minutes?
For
Yeah, 15.
15 minutes. My watch is wrong, so. 7:30?
Yeah, returning at 7:30.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.